Oh wow, that's a lot of view.
My wife decided that it was a good idea to.
I did, I uh, I did, I might have, I might have said I want to build shops or something.
It's a little blurry.
I know, I'm like, I just need my glasses on.
I have a stigmatism.
We can't change it to so get the better? Really? That's weird. I've never noticed that before.
Welcome everybody. Hi Wata, City Council, regular meeting, Wednesday, February 5th, 2020, roll call please.
Amy Okenbaum.
Here.
Carrie Malinko.
Here.
Rob Archibald.
Here.
Steve Dawson.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
I need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, citizens input, if there's anybody that would like to approach the mic tonight and talk about something that's not on the, on the actual agenda, please come up, state your name, and we'd love to listen.
I do have a question, and that is, is this decided number one for the rezoning from the old lay-in road?
Yes, it is.
And so, the comment restricted to part B, or can be part of the business?
It's part of the, it's part of the, it's part of the business, sir.
Oh, he's asking.
It'll be during the business, we'll have you, we'll open up the public hearing at that time, and that's when your opportunity.
Yep, yep. Perfect, I see none, so we'll just move on. Reports from council members, myself, Kim.
It's nice to go days without snow.
Yeah, yeah, I kinda like the warm, but no, things have been good.
I attended the water board meeting, January 21, and had a gentleman there who's a private contractor for Homeland Security, and was asking about the possibility of adding an antenna on the Robbins Road water tower. So they're gonna take that under consideration, the person will bring back some more information as far as how much it weighs, they'll have to get the tower inspected, and meet all the same criteria as the other people who have antennas up there. They also considered a resolution setting the public hearing for a ground storage tank, and then they considered a resolution to rescind one of the resolutions 24-19 budget for fiscal year 2021, and re-adopt the final budget fiscal year 2021. There were some minor dollars, it was a clerical error, so they had to fix that, and that's it.
Okay.
I attended the planning and zoning meeting, we'll discuss what was passed by the board tonight, but I thought there were a lot of good questions, they seemed to be all answered, and Pat, you did a good job, and our consultants. But I think at the end of the meeting, you asked for more questions, and they didn't happen, but we have an opportunity to discuss it a little further tonight.
Yep.
It was a good meeting.
Perfect, Kim?
I do, I have a few things, one is a reminder about our Hiawatha Summit, which is, will be held next Tuesday at Hunkem Kruger. The topic will be Homebase Iowa and the incentives that the state has out there for those individuals, those business owners that are, that hire or bring on veterans, and having some support, financial support to be able to do that, and so it's a great, I know you guys are familiar with Homebase Iowa and the initiative that we have here in Hiawatha, but this is just another initiative that kind of will be open to the public to learn more about Homebase Iowa, and we're doing that through our, through our head co-organization. And then also a couple celebrations are certainly, we had our ribbon cutting at Proactive Pediatrics, this is, they're located in Boyson Square, and these are three young entrepreneurs that specialize in occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy for, for children, and it's really cool to watch young entrepreneurs, and certainly, three women that were willing to kind of take, take a risk, and kind of jump in there and create their own business, and they're, they're doing awesome, and we're happy to celebrate with them. And then also the city newsletter, I think, I often kind of thank people for the, the work that they do, and I want to be able to highlight the work that we are doing, Carrie and her team, along with our individual department heads that write many of the articles. We actually got a phone call from Cedar Rapids, and an email from Cedar Rapids Metro Economic Alliance, from Doug Newman, complimenting us on our newsletter and the professionalism that it shows and demonstrates. So I'm, that was, that was kind of nice to get that, get that compliment from him. And also, I'm excited that the library project is up and above ground, we have wood showing, so I'm really thrilled that we're finally moving along, we have, the lower level is, is poured, it's got concrete in it, it has, it's framed, and then we have the main floor that was, that was concreted as well. So we have a real floor for people, contractors to be building the rest of the framework, so it's nice to see some of that progress after what seemed like a slow start, so we're very happy about that. So I just want to celebrate that.
As far as celebrating, Book of List, our own Kim Downs was part of that book, put on by CBJ, so congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Very kind.
Okay, anything else? Alright, let's move right on to business. Public hearing to consider mending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance, Chapter 165. Unified Development Code 165 establishing a zoned districts, and 165 land use and regulations by district describing the mixed-use overlay district, and 165.17 zoning districts and zoning, and zoning, zoning districts and zoning district map of recommending by the Robbins Road corridor study submitted by Bolton &amp; Mink. And we're gonna start that public hearing at five.
Actually, can we have, can we have you guys come up and do the presentation first? And then we'll do, then we'll do the public hearing, thank you.
Yep.
I'm ready. That's my slide and answer tonight, so, thank you all, council members, for allowing me to be here. I am Rose Schroeder with Bolton &amp; Mink, and of course, that's been working all with the city and community, both on the Robbins Road corridor planning study, and then the subsequent implementation stuff that the city has taken on. So what I would like to, meant to you tonight is, is really the draft and product of the implementation piece, so many of you have been involved in that, or have seen pieces and parts of it along the way. But what I would like to do tonight is an overview presentation, for those of you that were attending commission, it will seem similar, there are a few additions. But really want to talk about an overview, some context of how we got here as it relates to that corridor study that you all accepted several months ago, what some of those decision points along the way are meaning, the difference between zoning and future land use, and what's an overlay district, and kind of just revisiting some of those topics from early in the process. And then we will talk about those actions that specifically you have on your agenda tonight for the public hearing, which is to go through the actual text of the proposed new mixed-use overlay district, and what most of the primary standards and pieces of that text are, what they mean, we'll show you kind of graphically what those could represent, also the actual maps, so the proposed rezoning and the proposed application of where that overlay might apply. So that's, that's sort of the arrangement of what I would like to go through with you all tonight. That has already skipped me forward. I'm still talking about something different, wasn't it?
He's not rushing it, so.
So, so again, the context, so this all started more than a year ago with the desire of the city and the community to look at the Robbins Road corridor study plan. So that was, the zoning plan, it looked at actual roadway design amenities to it, what should that area of Hiawatha be in the future, so in terms of land use redevelopment, some pedestrian amenities, so that was sort of the broader study, if you will, that resulted in several recommendations to the city for how to realize that vision. Just as kind of a reminder, the piece of that related to the zoning and planning portion of this would be that desire that we heard from the city committee and the community to have that more walkable, pedestrian-friendly kind of environment. But also, certainly that would see some public investment and reinvestment in the infrastructure in the area, which is already sort of on the city's radar, if you will, knowing that in the coming years, some of those improvements would be needed. So how should we take a holistic look at it, put that all together at the same time? Also, the desire to redevelop that area, and sort of create the, what is this place in Hiawatha? A lot of what we heard in that planning project was, it's a place we sort of cut through, it's a place many of us work, it's a place that many of us get to our neighborhoods from, but we don't really identify a specific thing or place with Robbins Road. So how do we create an identifiable place in the community? A place that, again, with reinvestment, both publicly and privately, would potentially attract new businesses, new jobs, new residents to the area. So, a little bit of a refresher, just to talk about some of the terminology that you saw in the plan that you'll be here tonight, just to make sure that's kind of distinguished for everyone here tonight. So zoning, as you all know, it is, it is the designation that every parcel in the city has that talks about things in a regulatory way, about what's permitted, what's not permitted, and some development standards, like the minimum setback requirements, maybe height, some of those kinds of things. So zoning, the city's official designation on every parcel in the city about the land use, what can occur on that parcel. To, to the next term, land use, so more general term, it's often used in the context of not necessarily the zoning designation of the property, but how does that property being used? Not every piece of property is being used as its current zoning would allow, because it may have been there for some time, maybe it's a new project. Future land use, in the city's comprehensive plan, which is its long-range plan, there is a set of maps that are called the future land use maps, and that says, looking forward, community-wide, these are the kinds of things we want to see in a more general way throughout the community. So every parcel also has a future land use designation, it does not come with any regulatory muscle, if you will, it's just saying that as the city makes changes, looks at rezoning, looks at development projects, is it consistent with the city's comprehensive plan? It's often a legal test, especially, used really across the country, but especially in Iowa, the courts have helped with that. So again, zoning. So a couple more things about zoning, things that come up a lot when we're talking about zonings, or rezonings, or uses, or legal uses, and certainly that we've gotten some questions on, so we want to talk about that a little bit this evening. So every city has, that has a zoning code, generally will also have a provision for legal, non-conforming uses and non-conforming uses, meaning uses existed at a time and place, maybe before the city even had zoning regulations, maybe before property was ever annexed into the city, maybe a rezoning change has happened, and now that use isn't allowed. So the city of Hiawatha is no different, there are provisions already in your Unified Development Code that say how those uses continue or don't continue, and how they are regulated. So basically, if your use were existing lawfully at the time of a rezoning change, your use can continue according to those standards. In Hiawatha, that there is a specific code section, but it basically means if the use doesn't cease to operate for a certain amount of time, or if it's not damaged by a certain law. That exists today in your Unified Development Code, it is not specific to the matters we're gonna talk about today, but it's always a good reminder. Also, one distinction I always like to make is that the non-conforming status of a property, if there is one, it's not tied to the ownership of that parcel, it is tied to the use of that land. So if you have a legal non-conforming use, and you choose to sell your property, and the next operator comes in and continues with that in accordance with your code, the ownership of the property is irrelevant, it runs with the land, so to speak, you hear that terminology sometimes. Now, also, it gets easy sometimes, common for people to throw the term grandfather, which typically does mean a legal non-conforming use, but the distinction that I would make is simply that you were doing something on a property, and the zoning changed. If that use were not legal on that property before the change happened, that does not mean that you have a legal non-conforming status, sometimes that gets kind of lost in, in the semantics. So if it was legal before it changed, it's legal now, if it was not legal, it's no more legal than, than before. And just to reiterate, the reason why communities use a future land use plan in their comprehensive plan is it really does set up a vision, and, and a lot of communities use that to make their plans for future investments. They use it for capital improvement programming several years out. They use it because frankly, it says to the public, it says to the development community, it says to the elected officials and boards and commissions of a city, this is the plan we put forward, certainly it can always change or be amended, but it sort of puts everyone on the same page, and offers continuity for that vision. So because one of the decision points in this process was that an overlay district would be an appropriate implementation tool for the Robbins Road corridor study, I want to just talk a little bit about what that also really means in the context of, of the other definitions. So an overlay district certainly is a zoning district, it is, it would be part of your zoning section, created by the Code of Ordinance. It, just as its name implies, sits on top of your other existing zoning. So every parcel is still gonna have a zoning designation, just like it does today, that exists in you, in your code, but an overlay sits on top of it, the reason you would do that is usually two categories. One, it either allows additional uses, or excludes, prohibits some uses, or, and sometimes and, it applies some different development standards than would be required in all of those individual zoning districts or parcels. So it is most often used, in general, for a master-planned area, a roadway corridor such as this, some other special redevelopment area, and the reason is because you don't have to go in and rezone a bunch of individual properties to get that same unified desired outcome, first and foremost. You may not want to change the underlying zoning, and also, because if you were to go into each one of those individual zoning districts and make amendments to those standards, that applies to any other parcel in the community that carries that zoning designation. So it is very often that an overlay is used in some kind of geographic context, corridor, sub-area, master plan, whatever you'd like to call it in your community. So again, it does not replace your zoning, if you have R1 zoning today, an overlay can still be placed on top of that. That's just one example. So some frequent questions that we get, when we look at rezonings, or overlays, or kind of land use redevelopment projects in general, I've, I've put a few of them up there, but oftentimes, especially when we talk about redevelopment concept or plan, the first thing people want to know is how long it's gonna take, which, which is a valid question, because it's exciting, and it's new, and you want to see progress, but, but realistically, the redevelopment of an area has to be very sort of deliberate and intentional, and in this case, this will be private sector-driven for, for all intensive purposes. So what that means is that if someone is inclined to sell their property for redevelopment, then they sell it. If they are not, then they do not. If they want to redevelop their own property, great, but it doesn't cause the current owner to have to proactively make these changes, I just want to make that clear. Just, if this is adopted at a certain time and place on a certain day, it doesn't mean that within so many days every property has to now suddenly meet these standards. Does it require someone to sell that property? No, absolutely not, you have the same property rights that you have before, you do not have to sell your property to anyone. I think I already touched on the other one, that's up there. A lot of questions that relate to legal non-conforming uses that we've had, especially related to the residential property. So if you have a single-family home, can you continue to use it as a residence? Yes, you absolutely can continue to use it as a residence. If for whatever reason that property is rezoned, the underlying property is rezoned, it will be subject to those same legal non-conforming requirements I referenced earlier, which means if you continue to use that property as a residence, you can sell it, you can continue to occupy it. If it's destroyed by more than 50%, that's already in there existing regulations. But this overlay district does not impact otherwise the legal non-conforming regulations of the street. Will I make my property tax increase? We know that's always, always a question, and I would answer it in the way that the city itself does not determine the assessed valuation of a property, that is, for, in this case, one county assessor office. The city of Hiawatha, of course, determines its own luxury, but not the assessed value. The second part to that always is how the tax classification is determined. And generally speaking, property tax classification is based on the actual use of the property, and not by the zoning of the property, they are not one in the same. So oftentimes they are, of course, if you have a piece of residential property that's being utilized residential, then that is likely how the assessor office is gonna classify it. Also, sometimes, for reference, people want to know, is this going on in other places? Do other communities have similar kinds of requirements? The answer is yes, they often do, sometimes they look a little different. There's certainly, zoning and development regulations are always adopted locally, so every community views them a little bit differently. It's not uncommon for the same kinds of elements and pieces of this proposed overlay to either be in an overlay in another community, it could show up in the design guideline, it sort of already does in Hiawatha. Sometimes it's in-site development regulations, or in the development, so these kinds of standards certainly you see in other communities, it takes on a little bit of a different mechanism, if you will, just like we talked about some different mechanisms when we first started. So as you're aware, in addition to the overlay, there were, there are, I should say, some proposed changes to underlying zoning. These are some pieces that we looked at overall when we were talking way back, if you remember, about the uses and the overall vision of the corridor, and so that is where these proposed changes came from. You'll see, often it's the industrial pieces, but also, as we were talking about, the more center part of the corridor is kind of a neighborhood center, more of a commercial or higher density residential, that is the resulting factor of some of those. And then really applying then the overlay essentially to that entire kind of even larger study area. The pieces on what I would call the south end, so on the left side of your map screen, are already sort of under development agreement and other standards that have been adopted by the city. So in that sense, we did not include those in this overlay. It just as easily could be, the standards are actually probably even a bit more, a bit more intensive with the development agreements that are in place. So essentially, we did put it over the, the study area, again, trying to realize that it is a tool to help to move that vision along. Okay, now I would like to get to the highlights of the actual text of that proposed new mixed-use overlay district. The part I would like to cover most is when, when does this happen? So I've already said, you know, it doesn't happen on day two of the adoption, so what causes this to need to happen? There's five or six sort of provisions, triggers, if you will, that would cause them to happen. I've broken them into a couple screens, I know that it's hard to read. But so plain and simply, if you are building new construction, commercial, industrial, multifamily, the standards we're gonna talk about here in a few minutes are minimal fire. If you are making an addition to an existing building that is more, that is more than 25% of its existing gross square footage, or it exceeds 50% of the assessed valuation of the building, not the building and the land, but the building, these provisions apply. Substantial rehab to commercial, industrial, multifamily, and when we talk about substantial rehab, that means even if you're not putting a new addition on it, you are making improvements to your property that, again, are that 50% or more of the assessed valuation, these requirements would also apply. I will just point out that we do have sort of this 24-month rolling schedule identified in here, and that really is essentially to make sure that if there are phase projects happening, that collectively, that project, you know, essentially needs to comply. The reason we chose assessed valuation is simply, it is a metric that is available for all properties. When county assesses every property, they do it out of their office, it's not an individual appraiser doing this one, an individual is across the bar the same, which is why we use that.
Is that common, common to use that across other communities?
Yes, I have seen it in other places. Now, I will be perfectly honest, there are some places that would say, like, for example, if there was a project that maybe was gonna get close to that, or that would be triggered by one of those, that they do allow a third-party appraisal, the city will set up a third-party appraisal to determine that number. You know, obviously, that bonus, if, if that was the way they went, would be that cost, and that bonus would be on, on the property owner to demonstrate that to the city. There's certainly nothing wrong with doing that, the reason I think using a publicly available number that is kind of set uniformly is just for that purpose. It's not so much, in a strange way, it's not so much about the literal number, it's just kind of that to the point, right? Like if you were significantly increasing the value, that's great, first of all, thank you for investing here. But second of all, we want over time to see these standards come into effect, so you do have to spare some money.
And just to be clear, these, this is already, this is not a new, this is something we already have. Just to be clear.
So to that point though, if a property owner wanted to dispute the assessed value, you're saying they could do that? And give a third party?
The way that it is written today, there is not a separate appeal process identified. Obviously, you could write essentially in there, like, or at the discretion of, the city could evaluate it through a party appraisal, like you could write something.
It's a change we have to make. Which would be beneficial to the property owner.
It could be, yeah, sure.
I think, I think that's worth considering.
And, and that would be pretty straightforward, to be honest, it would just add an example. It would just add an exemption for the ability for the city to consider another source. You would probably want to indicate that it would have to come from a license to a preserver and so on and so forth. But yes, we could certainly do that. Moving on to the remaining sort of applicability section, reoccupancy of 50% or more of a commercial, industrial, or multi, excuse me, multifamily structure site that's been vacant for six months. So this really, if you remember when we talked about this, the applicability to this really is intended to be for, like, un-multitenant buildings. So likely your existing legal nonconforming standards probably would have to cause all use of the property to cease for that continuous amount of time. So in other words, if someone was still using any part of that property or that building, that kind of that dormant period would wouldn't trigger. This is saying that, okay, if half of whatever that building is, is not being used, then you need to comply with it. Again, generally, that really is written just for a multi-tenant building, whether that's two tenants or it's a strip mall, or it could be one of those. The last two had much discussion about during the creation, but basically just saying all new standards have to comply with the standard, which is frankly, is the same with your existing sign code anyway, it's really a statement. The other would be that if you were going to give your building a bit of a facelift, if you were doing sort of a facade reinvestment, some new storefront windows or something, that if you were modifying more than 50% of sort of that front facade envelope, you also would need to meet those standards for this. Moving on through to the next section of the proposed regulation, I also mentioned that an overlay can sort of add uses or subtract uses that sort of sit on that geographic overlay. In this particular case, we have added proposed some prohibited uses. These were the types of uses that the committee and that the comments we were getting through the public processes thought were, not that they are bad uses, not necessary uses, but that they were contrary to sort of that pedestrian-friendly, walkable idea of the corridor. So again, these uses that are existing do not need to go away with the adoption of this, but it essentially wouldn't allow new uses such as this to come in. So these are typically going to be uses that may become a lot of outside storage and materials or equipment, or a lot of vehicles, a lot of the larger commodities that are often sitting outside per se, a little bit of it is retail, additional or new distribution, again, that, you know, intentional continued increase of truck traffic kind of in that corridor. So those, and by the way, these terms are those that exist in the code today, so these are otherwise defined in your code and are used in your zoning districts and other places today. So again, throughout all this, we've tried to keep these very consistent with your existing code in terms of metrics or standards that already existed, so that they're, it's a little smoother transition. Okay, so the next series of slides we're going to look at are going to graphically demonstrate kind of the main pieces of what I would call the site or the site development pieces of the overlay, and then a little later, sort of the more architectural building materials. So again, these don't demonstrate every single one of them, but they're intended to show what this might, what this might look like. So one of the first categories of things we talk about in the overlay is access. Basically, what this says, you certainly still want people to have access to this great corridor, you want them to encourage business and uses there, but you don't want to have curb cut after curb cut after curb cut onto your nice and new reconstructed street. So basically, it's a metric, 150 feet of frontage. If you have more than 150 feet of frontage, and then again, and these standards are applying to you, you would either have one two-way curb cut or two one-way curb cuts on that corridor street, in this case, Robbins Road. If you happen to have a corner lot, that same thing still applies, and you would also potentially get a curb cut on whatever that intersecting street is. Again, just trying, a lot of times, the two one ways, especially if there were like any kind of drive-through access or something, that's sometimes where that comes into play. So access is one of the categories. The next category, parking. First and foremost, there is nothing in this overlay that changes the number of parking stalls you would have to provide for this use anywhere else, the size of them, the size of the drive pile, anything like that. But what it does do, which is different, not completely different from your design guidelines, actually, but is that it is trying to encourage parking to be on the side and on the rear of properties. Again, the walkability, the pedestrian-friendly kind of environment, encouraging the buildings to be built closer to that corridor street, so having shared driving possible, it's not required, but where possible, to get parking along the side or to the rear of those properties. Also making sure that, you know, the redevelopment concept in the Robbins Road certainly still included residential, multifamily, commercial properties, making sure that the parking lots are buffered and screened where you're adjoining residential uses. Nobody wants headlights in their dining room windows at night as you're going through the drive-through or as you are parking wherever you're parking. So buffering requirements for those, and we really did reiterate those right out of another protection that you are. So again, that actual standard not changed. Some additional planting requirements, again, you actually have some of these already in your design guideline, we just quantified them a little bit more, saying that along that corridor street, you should have at least a five-foot strip of planted landscape materials, not requiring trees there in that fronted strip, which might seem a little strange. We would hope that there would be some trees in the actual street skate, but while we're encouraging those buildings to come to the front, we don't want someone planting a large tree between their foundation and public sidewalk, causing problems probably for both over time. So often, you would see a tree street kind of requirement there, you know, on private property, and this is kind of a standard, but we have removed that. But we are encouraging people, these requirements, to do shrubs, perennial, you know, there are some choices there, but to do more than just grass along there. Also quantifying that at least 10% of the gross site would be previous unpaid planning services. Now, that can include those bumper strips we talked about that are already potentially being required to install. And also having a requirement that in your parking lots, you have some tree requirements depending on the number of spaces you require, again, in the parking lots, not in those front planting strips. And we quantify that in there as well. Building placement, this is probably one of the significant changes from the way the current Hiawatha code is set up. In a lot of places, we have minimum setbacks, right? You have to be at least 15 feet, 20 feet, 25 feet, and so on, from back front concrete lawn. In this case, we are going with a build-to line, which means we're trying to encourage development to activate what will be that newly reconstructed street and pedestrian-wise. We want to keep buildings closer to the front with parking and other things to the side and back, so we have proposed a keep building, build-to line essentially. So that is a change, certainly from your other district. It's not unusual in other places, although it is still probably more common, except for in downtown, probably areas to have it covered. A couple other things, again, the screening we've already talked about, but we also just want to make sure that any dumpster, common garbage collection areas are all screened with some kind of enclosure as well. So just worth mentioning. Sorry. This next bit is going to sort of move away from what I would call the site development kind of standards and talk more about the structure itself. This slide that's up there simply represents a visual preference survey that we did in the Robbins Road study. We really simply just picked a whole bunch of different kinds of buildings and architecture and asked people what they liked. And so you can kind of see a lot of, kind of a more contemporary flat road kind of stuff really sort of held true. So the architecture section really is mostly about building materials and what I would call glass and glazing sort of at the storefront level. So that fundamentally, what it's trying to do is use some more masonry-like products. That does not mean everything has to be brick. There are lots of different options for panels and different decorative treatments and metals that could happen there. But really, what it is pretty explicitly doing is not allowing what I would call smooth base, seeing a new block, right, your standard concrete block building. And this is new construction that would need this requirement. So we have proposed a percentage of a building that would need to be those materials. Again, it allows flexibility in the person designing it to have some choice, as long as they can quantify some of those materials. One of the other things which already occurs in many places is making sure that you extend a flat roof with a parapet or even some kind of freestanding screening to just sort of screen those rooftop mechanicals from public view, like from the public right-of-way or from the sidewalk. It can be done in lots of different ways, sometimes the building itself takes care of it. Sometimes in the retrofit situation, I have seen freestanding different mesh panels or something used there. It certainly doesn't mean every time someone needs to do a retrofit that they have to invent some kind of parapet wall around their structure that doesn't fit. Again, the objective just being, over time, to start minimizing some of that and having a design that doesn't count that. Onions and architectural features, great, want to encourage them, we just want to make sure they're not projecting into the public, into the public right-of-way. And the other thing you will see in here that has had discussion is that we are trying to prohibit, not allow, pitch ropes. There was a lot of suggestion about this along the way, so essentially looking again for flat ropes or ropes that are flat appearing in some way. This next slide really just talks about, again, the front facade, we're trying to activate that space, we're trying to have it be more pedestrian-friendly, so that first level, trying to have more glass and glazing and openings, so that you don't have sort of just this blank stucco wall along the sidewalk now. So just suggesting that at that front base, that at least half of that street level is broken up with some kind of windows, doors, or something. And again, lots of ways to accomplish that. And then also saying that accessory structures need to relate to these standards as well. We need people through all of the trouble to have this nicely designed, you know, siding building there, that if you need some outside storage for engines or materials, which certainly you could, that it needs to have a little bit of the same kind of character of materials. The one other thing I would just mention, and I didn't explicitly have it on here, certainly in the official materials, is that we would hope that, you know, part of activating the space and making it be more friendly and having some, you know, restaurants and those kinds of things, which is what we heard from people, that there needs some opportunities for outdoor dining on their own property and to have some patios. And so making sure that, you know, any sun shades or any sort of patio amenities are durable, lasting materials. And that is in your materials. That is the overview that I have provided for you today. If you have any specific questions, clarifications from me that we have to do.
Well, we've all spent a lot of time with this, and we're obviously excited about it. And so I guess if nobody has any questions up here, we start the...
Public hearing.
Yeah, the public hearing, and anybody that would have a question and can come up to the mic, could state their name and their address, and we would sure love to answer
Just state the time.
Yeah, the time of the... Yeah. 6:13 is the start of our public hearing.
Thank you.
I'm Officer Walker, number 114, and also number 41. And I have received an offer of $30,000 for my house, and I was told that that is what property is selling in my neighborhood. Now, I wouldn't have to dispute that. The house at 103 Northway Drive was sold in November of 2019 for $63,000. That's straight across the street. The house at 106 Northway Drive was sold 11/17/2016 for $79,900. The house at 105 Northway Drive, and the 8th/22/17, sorry, that's the wrong one, is $90,000. This is the assessment on my house, it's $9,900 that I think it taxes on. And I have a garage on the corridor that is assessed at $30,000. So I have the two properties. I would like to know if you are going to adhere to $30,000 for my house, because other properties, one behind me sold for that, but I don't face that, my house is solid. I have a very serious vision problem, and I'm not able to drive from my property in northeast travel as I would like to. So it causes me a great dear anxiety. But I would appreciate knowing exactly how you're going to deal with buying it up. I am ready to sell. It's nothing.
Have you had your property appraised?
Pardon?
Have you had your property appraised?
No, I just wanted to know this first.
Mark, you might want to address that in terms of the steps that she might suggest, if you think.
Sure. So obviously, you received an offer from a third party that they've offered you $30,000. Obviously, that wasn't from the city.
Yeah.
It was a private party.
Well, I'm not sure about that.
Okay. This would be new to me if the city made a profit.
It'd be new to all of us.
Okay. Have you put your house, have you listed your house with a realtor or talked about what its value would be? I mean, I'm not a real estate appraiser, but if property's being assessed, I think you said it's $69,000?
$69,000.
And someone's offering you $30,000, it sounds, without seeing it, I haven't seen it, I don't know what it looks like, it sounds a little low.
Well, I think so, but I don't know how the city's going to be able to do this.
Well, but I don't know that the city has an interest in purchasing any land as it relates to the overlay district unless I have new information. So, I mean, if you want to sell your house, you may want to either contact an attorney to assist you with that, or maybe contact a realtor.
An attorney does have a paper.
Has what paper? The offer?
The offer, sorry, I just got...
Okay. You could obviously make a counteroffer and say, no, I'm not going to sell it for $30,000, but you can buy it for X. Or you can just simply reject the offer.
I understand.
And if you still want to sell your property, you might want to engage a professional like a realtor to help you establish a price and then put it on the market, if that's what you want to do.
So the city is not going to buy property?
My understanding, based on the presentation tonight and everything I know, I don't think the city is buying any property as it relates to the overlay district at this time. That doesn't mean it won't change later, but my understanding, there's no plans to purchase any properties involved in the overlay district. any properties involved in the overlay district.
That's correct.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Ashpacher and Paul is my mother. I just would like a couple of clarifications. The first is, since I'm kind of a environmentalist, in the plan for the, the, uh, cutting down the rules for the new structures and how they appear, have you made any consideration for if someone wants to put solar panels on the top, on the roof of this platform? Because the stipulation is you have to have an overhang, but a flat roof, you can't take advantage of a slope to catch the rays. So I would ask you to consider that. And then also, I would like a clarification of, in the presentation, the phrase cease to operate for a period of time. In other words, the grandfather clause will fail if that clause can be implemented. And we're talking residential, of course. Could you decline cease to operate as far as residence is concerned? Because if someone hasn't lived there 24/7, or lives there intermittently, is that a violation? Would that be considered a cease to operate?
Pat, you want to take a shot at it and I can check in?
From our experience or from my understanding, intermittent occupancy is allowed. The only issue there is, of course, working with us on that, that six months. I would assume it would be something less than that, but that would not be considered cease of use or vacating the property.
And thanks for sending me the data.
You're welcome.
I asked you to send some data that you referenced at the last meeting. I need it.
All right. Thanks, Charles.
Thank you.
If not, we'll close the public hearing. Whoops, one more.
Pat Callen, 97 North Center Point Road. I don't have any questions, more of just a comment that I guess I'd like to thank City of Hiawatha and you guys for considering this proposal. I think the ability to have the visionary to look out and start to lay some of this groundwork, start to plant some of these seeds for the future is awesome. I think it's good for Hiawatha, it's good for my business, and I think it'll be good for that area. You know, I kind of looked at that compared to what happened over here at the intersection. You know, it was at least 10 years, maybe 15, 20 where that was talked about cleaning up and changing the intersection and somebody, you know, 10 or 15 years ago planted those seeds to prepare the fruit that it has today. It's beautiful, white trails, the intersection, everything is great, so I hope you guys consider this. Hopefully it can be all through and keep Hiawatha moving on the right path.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's a testament of councils of the past, so.
There you go.
There you go. Anybody else? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 6:22. And A, consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance, Chapter 165 Unified Development Code, 16514 Establishing as Zone Districts, and 16516 Land Uses and Regulations by District Describing the Mixed Use Overlay District.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Jerry. Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye. Consider waiving second and third reading.
Mayor Bennett, can I just stop you for just a moment? Mark, do you, so there is council, from my understanding, there is one change that they would like to make or add, I should say, and that is the ability to have the third party with the opportunity, a licensed appraiser, to come in. Is that a significant enough change that maybe we hold off on the second reading and give people another opportunity, or is, do you feel like that's...
In my opinion, it's not a significant change. It's consistent with, I believe, what the plan is. And so I think folks could make it subject to that change. On the flip side, if council wants to not waive the second and third reading, bring it back with that change, it can do that as well. But I think you could move forward with reading, waiving second and third...
And it is an advantage to the property owner, too. So it's a positive, not a minus.
Exactly. Gives them another opportunity to weigh in for the value.
I think we can go forward with that.
Everybody else comfortable with that?
Yeah.
I agree. Okay, so number two, waiving second and third reading?
I'll make a motion to waive second and third reading.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. B, consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance, Chapter 165...
Consider, we need to consider adoption.
Yeah. Consider adoption.
So moved.
Yep. And roll call. There we go.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. B, consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance, Chapter 165 Unified Development Code, 65 Zoning Districts and zoning district map. A, consider first reading.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
B, consider waiving second and third reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? C, consider adoption.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
All right. Number two, cigarette violation. Motion approving acknowledgement statement agreement from Hawkeye Convenience Store located at 975 Robbins Road. Did we get that?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number three, consider resolution approving engagement agreement to disclose and, remember...
Memorialize.
Memorialize the terms and conditions and service provided by Allers and Coonley Bond Consultant to the City of Hiawatha to, in connection with the issuance of a general obligation capital loan note.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number four, not to exceed $3,100,000 general obligation capital loan note. A, consider resolution fixing date, February 19th, 2020, at 5:30 PM for a meeting on the authorization of the loan agreement and the issuance of the note to not exceed $3,100,000 general obligation capital. Loan notes of the City of Hiawatha, State of Iowa, and issuance...
Essential.
Initiative, essential corporate proposals, and providing the publication of notice thereof.
So moved. Second.
First and a second. Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Number five, not to exceed $556,000 general obligation capital loan note. A, consider resolution fixing date, February 19th, 2020, 5:30 PM for a meeting and the authorization of loan agreement and the issuance of a not to exceed $556,000 general obligation capital loan note of the City of Hiawatha, State of Iowa, for general corporate proposals and provide the publication and notice thereof.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Okay, number six, not to exceed $85,600 general obligation capital loan notes. A, consider resolution fixing date, February 19th, 2020, 5:30 PM for a meeting on authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $85,600 general obligation capital loan note of the City of Hiawatha, State of Iowa, in general corporate proposal and provide the publication and the notice thereof. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number seven, consider resolution setting the hearing date, February 19th, 2020, to consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance III, boundaries and add a newly annexed territory, ITC Midwest LLC, CIP CO.
So moved. Second.
We got first and a second. Discussion? Man, this took a while.
Something we've been working on for a while.
This took a while.
It's official.
Yep.
Officially, Hiawatha.
Awesome. Roll call.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number eight, Tower Terrace Road reconstruction project from I-380 to North Center Point Road. A, consider resolution approving contract amount, number one, to the professional service agreement for design work in connection with Tower Terrace Road reconstruction project and proceed with adding the design necessary to relocate an existing water main to the south in order to move in front, in from under the new street paving. So moved. Roll call.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Number nine, new commercial development on the property located at 1460 North Center Point Road. A, consider resolution approving design of a new commercial development to Hiawatha Design Guidelines.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
It's good to see that area and get moving.
A little over 52,000 square feet and a couple of other buildings behind proposed. Nice design, too.
A lot of activity, a lot of activity out there. Crazy. Okay, roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye. Number 10, consider resolution referring proposal to vacate the portion of Oak Street right of way west 150 feet of Oak Street in the planning and zoning mission as established in the section 137.02 in the Code of Ordinances for the proposal of a study and recommendation to the City Council for consideration.
So moved.
Second. Everybody know what this is about?
I was just going to ask.
Yep. It's just a little chunk, it's a little chunk of Oak Street with the idea that when we do the proposal for that area, that it relieves some of the streets so we don't have to...
Currently it's in.
You know.
That's why it's a question.
Take something off her plate.
Yeah.
Okay?
Just add it to the building. Just add it to over.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, we got a first and a second?
Yep.
Roll call.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkle.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Number 11, Duane Arnold Electric Center, or is that how that's?
Energy Center.
Energy Center, okay.
Oh, thank you.
Outdoor warning system, we're going to get a little bit of a update with Mike on what the proposals are.
This is, um, this is a very, very long, absolutely, I put it down to 44 months.
That's good, usually adds.
I mean, they could do a better job. I'll also acknowledge that Rob probably has some information or some knowledge from past practice about this, but I felt like it was my responsibility to try to tell you about something that could impact public safety. So I got some notes here and you'll have them to follow. We have a very robust outdoor warning system in this county, probably one of the best in the states, and that's because of Duane Arnold Energy Center. It's required by federal regulations to have an outdoor warning system as long as making power and those processes going on. In addition to the particular events that in the warnings about the outdoor warning system, the sirens over here, everyone's warning, it provides critical warning and other decisive ones and other events and catastrophes. It was blown in Peglow during the 2008 flood, they used the system then, I know it's available to us, we had to evacuate the area because of hazardous materials and stuff. It serves more purpose than just nuclear events. And of course, if we go back to the 70s, it's a bomb system, it's not drops a bomb on a designer or something. So it serves a very important aspect of public safety. There's other technologies available that provide a school warning system, you're all familiar with those. The media, you know, we get cell phone alerts, reverse signaling systems. However, the outdoor warning system, in my opinion, is still a very effective way to draw attention to an emergency. I can speak firsthand that I've been home on a Saturday, TV's off, I'm working on my garage, taking a nap or whatever, once the sirens start going, that gets my attention. I can hear my phone go off, you know, I look and say, there's a tornado coming or whatever. So it's an important system. So some notes there. First off, D A C fully funds this operating, maintenance, and repair of this system, including they got a sirenguy, so if something breaks, it goes off fixed the same day. I think they have a 24-hour schedule where they follow. However, when the power plant shuts down, D A C and Florida Power Line are not going to be required to maintain the system any longer. Consistent with what they've done, what other power plants have done in the past, it's believed that F P L, the owner of the plant, will donate the system to the two affected counties, which are the county of Desa County. It's expected that that will be a donation, it'll be free, there'll be no outlay. It's also expected that that system will be at 100% functioning level when they abandon it. It'll be in excellent shape, it'd be a great certified used car, if it was a car, we expect it to be a good system when it's abandoned. Some notes that I have, and these came from emergency management, they believe the plan will stop the losing power in fall of 2020, they won't shut it down at that point, they have a lot of things they have to do, cool down, let the laws and Rob tell you all about that if you want to hear something really fascinating, I'm sure everybody's here. The outdoor warning system will be maintained while that's going on, and they expect that that will be the fall of 2021. After that point, responsibility for the system, if the county accepts it, will come to the county, if the county doesn't accept it, there'll be no system. I'm sure they'll come up with something. But after that point, the affected counties, then, will be expected to maintain the siren system. So since the decision points that emergency management, emergency management commission, those that's on his left, his, I don't like to alternate, the counties need to determine first whether or not to take care of the siren system. Second, the level which will be maintained. By that, I mean refer back to school, that this plant has their siren guy that goes out and fixes things right away. Does the county want to hire a siren guy that goes out and fixes it, or do they want to do something less than that? So there's levels of maintenance that will be affected. And most significantly, if we take that on, how is the cost going to be funded? And it's estimated for Lynn County, that cost is going to be around $167,000. That's a guess, that's kind of a wild guess, and they say it's a liberal guess, or it's maybe that it would be less than that, or a little bit more than that. There's a lot of mechanisms for funding that. The one that's most significant that most people don't realize is the emergency management commission. It's a separate agency and the management commission's able, that will levy a tax on their own, relations that they say are on the ledger, and supervisors have to acknowledge that from their end. But there's other ways it could happen, dozens of ways. If that could happen, I don't want to go into that tonight. The action that's going on right now, and I did not know the emails coming out today, but we got an email today that said, we're appointing a committee, and we do that, but you know, I think today he's appointing a committee to look at that, to evaluate all the options. So the thing that I wanted to convey to you is that the siren system is important to public safety here in Hiawatha, it still serves, it's still an important step that It still serves, it's still an important step in our warning and our keeping our systems safe, especially during severe weather. But that's going to be impacted by what happens over time with the Emergency Management Commission, and what decisions are made, so.
Okay.
I have a question. So, currently, so we have a tornado in the area, who actually turns on?
That's a, that's an excellent question. The system can be activated at Dwayne Arnold, which doesn't get activated very regularly. It can be activated by the Lynn County Sheriff's Office, and that's who usually activates it, or it can be activated by Lynn County people. The Sheriff's Office typically activates it because Lynn County email staffs, unless they know a storm's coming, they know a storm's coming, but they can be activated in three different cases. Once the night closes, the system's got, it's expected to be activated at Sheriff's Office.
Okay, so the National Weather Service or NOAA.gov doesn't-
They should provide recommendations.
Okay.
How many sirens are within the city limits?
Three or four, I tried to go out and look today to just verify, but again, the calls, I don't know if I got them. So, there's-
We can get you a map.
Can I have one?
I can get one.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
There's one set on Peddrid Road.
Do you got one?
Then there's others that are in Cedar Rapids or surrounding that affect us. There's one, I don't think it's in Hiawatha, but it's on Todd Hill Road. So, there's four that might be also responsible for it.
Yeah, now that there's one, uh, line direction, because I hear it very well.
You do, too.
Very well.
There's one right on Todd Hill's, I believe.
It's gotta be really close, because, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it felt like it was in my backyard, because we were out walking.
Fairly certain it's on the south, or the south side of Todd Hill's Road, so.
Mike, a couple of things, you know, the concern I had when, when we sat through this meeting is because of the hundred and forty-four sirens that are total, and the ones that are actually owned by individual cities and, and the ones that set them off for a bunch, and, and with that being said, are we gonna get everybody on the same page so we can kind of control this, or?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question, I don't think we know the answer to something that many want to talk about. So, what the mayor you're referring to is some municipalities, and two that are really important to talk about are Fairfax and Walter, own their own siren system. They have the capacity to activate the sirens on their own. In addition, the county has the ability to activate those sirens. The county, one of the county's options is that not only they take in the sirens that are owned by FPL, but they would take in the sirens that were owned independently by those municipalities. It's more complex in Benton County than it is here, because Benton County has a lot of sirens that are owned, and there's a few municipalities and a few sirens that are owned. It's kind of flipped, but Walter and Fairfax are important, because it seems that they get a lot before the rest of the county gets activated. And they'd like to have that ability to activate their siren to their own. EMA's position could be, probably something for the committee to discuss, is that if EMA is responsible for the sirens, they want control of the sirens. It's always been said that there's a liability that the company's owning the siren. So, Emergency Management has very tight guidelines they use to activate the sirens. Have to straight line them to see seventy-some miles an hour, or twenty, if sighted by a train spotter before they activate it. If you don't follow those guidelines, somebody gets excited, I'm a fire chief, I don't want to say this, but a nineteen-year-old kid gets excited, runs into the firehouse, hits the button on a siren because he thinks it's windy, and then, and she falls, and Mrs. Smith breaks her femur, it's the city liable for blowing out sirens where it wasn't. EMA's position is they'd like to wrap the sirens in to one of them.
Right.
Again, that's a, that's a committee, that's a committee piece.
Okay, and that's my second comment, is that we luckily had someone graciously volunteer to be, that would be more knowledgeable than I think anybody, any of us on board, to, to sit in with these committees to, to come up with the best answer.
Yeah, I, I think, I think this is, this is a situation where it's important to have elected officials sitting in on that, just-
Absolutely.
Policy and its long-term policy.
Yep. And it's, and it's a-
To support the siren system, I think you know that, I think it's important to public safety.
Oh, sure.
That, that's something controlled, I think, we should answer. I think there's a good path forward, it's not a pretty, but there's a path to it.
Right.
I think maintaining the system to me is a no-brainer. It's, it's a huge benefit to the, to Lynn and Benton Counties to have the system. We don't, you look around the state and across the Midwest, there's not very many other communities that have this in their community.
It's a very robust system, it's a, it's a well-designed system, it's, and the great thing is, is that you certify used car analogy, or any new system.
There's-
Because if you didn't have, I would suggest as a city that we installed our own sirens, particularly near golf carts, near the parks, for the golf paddles, where people are out there.
And the system was just upgraded within the last two years, so it's not like we're getting a nineteen-seventies system, so.
Yeah, we talked about those upgrades.
Ten million dollars they dumped into them, so they can actually activate separate portions of Lynn County. It used to be an all or none type of thing, and now it's, they can actually go down to the different subsections that are identified.
So, battery.
All the new ones have solar backup, so they can't go down, so.
It's a good system.
We're very fortunate, and I, I think, hopefully everybody across the county feels the same as us, so.
It was interesting in the sense I get is that there was broader support in Lynn County than there was in-
Benton County, right.
This is, these are the slides.
But Benton County obviously don't have the impact, you know, we're at a hundred and teens, thirteen wasn't it, and then there's like thirty, whatever.
Hundred forty-four total in the system.
Right. Yeah.
There's a small portion of Benton County.
Yep, Benton County, yep, so, and a lot of theirs are owned by communities, so. Well, awesome, you know, I can't wait to hear what everybody's got for a forecast, you know, we need to know about the, what's it gonna cost to operate them, and, and, you know, the other thing is, we're gonna lose a little bit of funding from Dwayne Arnold when they leave. You know, because they, they actually give money to EMA. So, that's all part of it, so, anyway.
One, one position that maintains outdoor warning systems, who is a indoor warning system, is that has receivers in like homes and schools and things like that, they also support that system. And they have to pay the salaries of a lot of employees out there, so, that's a decision that the commission will have to make, is how they're coming up with that.
Yep.
Lots of, lots of bits and pieces that go into the power plant. Not that, drag it out, but we do a lot of nuclear training on how to handle patients, and we do it every year, and we have expensive devices on the ambulances that are basically provided because of Dwayne Arnold's full power.
We also have a revenue stream.
We did have a decent revenue stream, so G and B could not account for that type of process.
No.
Right.
Thought that's going through my mind, Mike, and probably not all that relevant, but if other communities have their own system, if it would come to it and there'd be some kind of dispute that we would not agree to, do you have any sense of what the cost would be for us to have our system?
One I looked into, it was like forty thousand a siren. Like forty thousand dollars a siren, it's expensive to do it, because you don't have just a siren on hold, you have all these control mechanisms and wiring, and so it's very expensive.
Plus maintenance.
And multidirectional speakers.
Would that be annual, or is it just kind of an initial upfront cost?
Um, that would be upfront cost.
Okay.
Is, is there, how many municipalities in Lynn County have their own? Springville?
Mount Vernon, I think I heard, over here in, it isn't-
Yeah, Mount Vernon.
Lisbon and Mount Vernon, out in Central City, I don't know that's-
Okay, so it's the outer counties that are outside the EPZ?
So, there's something called the EPZ.
Emergency planning zone, right.
Right.
Which is ten miles from the plant, and that's where the sirens are located, in the EPZ. Outside the EPZ, the sirens are out there, the sirens are outside EPZ. They're outside the municipalities or the counties that have those, and those people are considered greater than ten miles by the line.
Random weird question, um, when the power plant shuts down, do they store the nuclear waste at the plant, or is that staying there, or? So, I mean, because my question is, I mean, certainly if you have nuclear-
The answer is yes, we can talk offline.
Okay, but it's like, I mean, the, the emergency is not necessarily gone, I mean, certainly they store it, but-
But the emergency planning zone shrinks significantly because of the potentials much less.
It's in the presentation of the EPZ, so the fuel comes out, and it takes like a year for the fuel to cool down.
Yeah.
Basically, they'll make the plant as functional as far as emergency planning is concerned, a lot of fuel's cooling down.
Right.
Once they store it, once they put it in the hold, or the, whatever it's called, it'll shrink the EPZ down basically to what's, um-
A very small zone.
Yeah, it's an under-controlled area, they call it, basically inside the, the stuff that they own, that would be the EPZ, and they would have our sirens, and so.
Rob version afterward, not broadcasted live on YouTube.
So I can get some for my flux capacitor?
No, I just don't want to sound like a fool.
I have one last question, I don't mean to drag this out, but, this thing's going through my mind. If, um, from your professional perspective, is there any benefit, I'm thinking about these smaller communities that have their own systems, I don't know why I want to dwell on that, is there any benefit for, or would there be any benefit for us to have our own system? I don't want to be cavalier about forty thousand a siren, but if you need three or four of them, in the scheme of things, that's not a huge expenditure, just trying to understand it.
So, I like the fact that somebody else is responsible for the sirens.
That is key.
I like the fact that, considering the transponder, I can come on the radio and say, I see X, Y, Z, and they're responsible for the sirens.
Answer. It's, it would be much better to maintain the system as is and not have to, not look and get our own. No, if it decides that, oh my God, they're gonna completely disband the system, then I think it would be beneficial, but.
I agree on that, uh, the question is, when we expand to the northwest, would we need to deploy more, would that, how would the sirens be?
We're going, well-
That's another bonus.
Long, long time away, but right now we're expanding toward the power plant.
Okay.
So, I want to go for a drive, because there's more sirens out there than there are in Scottsdale, I think there's one on County Home Road somewhere, near, um, near Todd Hill itself. So, I think in the weeks, man, we'll okay that way.
Another thing is, is where they're really condensed, they're talking about maybe moving some of them, too, to, to better locations. As, as we grow, you know, so, in place-
Yeah, that would make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the information was not available as I was preparing, but it will be available by the time the committee starts, and that's the GIS map, actually, the GIS mapping of systems, which is what I can say. The old way they put a siren down, use a compass, they're all serviceable, and that's the area. Now they figure out there's a siren on one side of the hill, that's not good for the people on the other side of the hill. So, we got a pretty flat area, that siren is circling one quarter of the year.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
But, for Lynn County, EMA will be doing a little presentation to the public of the sirens when they do, when we have the spotter training come out in a few weeks.
Right. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
Okay, lot, lot more to come on that. Okay, number twelve, special event application by Mary's Meals, consider motion approving a special event application.
Thank you for waiting.
So moved.
Thanks for being patient.
Absolutely. May ninth, two thousand twenty, I don't want to take your thunder away, but.
Oh, no, I don't really have a lot to add, I think a lot of you were here when I came a couple years ago, but, Mary's Meals, that great organization, we, um, the last couple of years, it's been a, to, we, um, I was like, three hundred and thirty, a year, um, made about sixty-six million dollars, and this year, and I was sort of, I have back to your, your goal, maybe it does, um, this year, we, we plan to, um, to continue our commitment to beating a hundred and seventy-seven, we exceeded that, you know, for the last two years, but we also would like to support Feed Iger first, their local organization that grows produce and buildings through the community. And we were gonna split after our commitment of beating this almost two hundred students, we then wanted to split that with Mary's Meals and Feed Iowa first. They're gonna help us out, hopefully, um, advertising, and they're gonna, they're gonna have some of their volunteers for this day, so, we're pretty excited about the partnership. And then, the only other thing that we're adding this year is we're gonna try and do a little kids' run that will be around the United States.
Perfect.
Do you guys have the, the route?
Yes, I think you-
The route, we're all, we're all, we're hoping that the route can be moved at all.
It's a good route, nice and flat.
It is.
And the care center over there loves, loves it when it goes by, so, it's a perfect route as far as I'm concerned. Okay.
Thank you for coming, Chelsea.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So moved, you probably shouldn't.
I got a motion, second and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number thirteen, possible closed session per Iowa Code two thousand and five to discuss pending litigation, so. Should we go into closed session? Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Jerry Mowinkle?
Aye.
Rob Archibald?
Aye.
Dick Olson?
Aye.
Amy Wickendall?
Aye.
Steve Dodson?
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session at six fifty-four.
Same question.
They donated an acre of land to Feed Iowa first, and they came out and broke their cheese. I didn't know what was underneath there, you know, it was just-
How many pounds of drugs were in that? That, how many, how many pounds did you get out? Yeah. I noticed it's empty now, so, or you can't see it.